It is 6 o'clock on August 20, 24. At 6:00 PM, I'm calling Iowa City Council Forum Meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Here.
Okay. Now, I'm going to go to item one. It is item two, second consent agenda. May I have a motion? First, I think we need...
Is it a motion to...
Do you want to pull out?
Do I pull out first?
Yeah, I do. Is that how it works?
How it works to pull out first?
I would like to pull out item 6C, traffic control on Russell Drive.
6C. Okay, I would like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda, item 2 to 6, with taking 6C out.
So moved, Alter.
Second. Mo.
Second by Alter. And no...
Moved by Alter.
Moved by Alter, second by...
Yeah.
Okay, and now, public discussion?
None.
Anyone online? None online. Council discussion on the consent agenda.
I simply wanted to pull it out because this is a section in the South District that goes to Alexander and is pretty well traversed. And since there's a traffic change, I want folks to know about it and to talk about it a little bit. So I don't really have any more than that, other than that the yield signs are going to turn to stop signs. So that's a really big thing for that road. Is there a sense of timeline on that?
Well, we've got the consent calendar without...
We're going to discuss it later.
Without that. Oh, right. I am so sorry. Maz was looking at me.
Right. No, right now, I'm just saying like any discussion on the consent agenda.
Right. My bad.
If there is none, roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Motion basis, seven to zero. Okay, now, we are going to public comment.
Mayor Protem.
No, we need to discuss item 6C that dimpled by...
Yes, and so I just will restate, I am...
I'm sorry, you need to have a motion as second and then...
Sorry.
Yeah, can we have a motion to move item 6C?
So moved, Harmsen.
Second.
And any one you can discuss?
Okay, now, I will simply, first of all, let me say Mayor Teague makes it look so easy. Second of all, I just want to reiterate that this is about a section of street going to Alexander that's moving from yield signs to stop signs. And so my question is whether there's a timeline already planned.
I can jump in and take that. It typically takes about two weeks for us to install a sign, weather permitting, so roughly, that's what you should expect.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. I was preparing myself without taking anything from the consent agenda. So, let us go to item seven, which is community comment.
We need a vote, Mayor Protem.
Oh, see? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve item number 6C?
I think we have the motion as second. I think if there's no other discussion, we can just write a roll call.
Right to the vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Okay, motion approve 6, seven to zero. And now, public comment. And this is only in person comment. I'm not going to allow no one online. And we will be allowing community, public, to speak on this item or any item that is not on the agenda. And please keep your comment to three minutes.
Hey, good to see all of you, or few of you, actually, a lot of you missing. You know, some things in the world aren't fair, as I see it. Why is it that, you know, during the Miss Universe Contest, that the winner always comes from Earth? You know, that always strikes me as kind of odd. What about the other planets in the universe, right? Now, that may not be such a useful question, maybe, I don't know. It's just that type of question you ask when you're a kid, right? Your kids ask these questions. My kids ask these questions. But then, there are other questions that may be more important, like, for instance, why is it, why is it that we get to bomb, invade, change regimes, get rid of leaders, meddle in elections all over the world with our tax dollars, without even voting on such? No proposals of war, without even a vote? But, we have 72% of our country wants national health care, and we can never get that. We doesn't seem to get it. Even though we want it, but we don't get it. A lot of people in Iowa City, they vote Democrat. I never voted Republican. But even when the Democrats are voted in, they always say, "We're going to do all this good stuff." But instead, we bomb, we invade, we meddle in elections, we get rid of leaders, but we don't get national health care. We don't get affordable housing, we don't get raised minimum wage, we don't get a maximum wage. And right now, I mean, we're involved in so many things. We're meddling in Venezuela, we're bombing in Syria and Yemen, we are arming an apartheid state in Israel, destroying lives in Gaza, we are arming a fascist rogue state in Kiev and Ukraine to attack its other side of Ukraine and Russia. Yet, we want the basic things for ourselves here. We don't want to bomb anybody. I don't want to bomb anybody. I vote, I pay taxes, I want to do good things. So why, if 72%, for instance, want national health care, and the same percentage doesn't want to arm Israel or Kiev or do other things in Syria, why is it we only get that and we don't get what we want? The city council is connected, locally, we're connected. And I think that we think of ourselves as a liberal city, right? Liberal town, whatever that might mean. Well, maybe we'll get Kamala Harris. Whatever we get, we should demand that we get the stuff we need, and we stop bombing and invading other countries. And thank you so much for your time.
Anyone from the public would like? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Charlie Nussar. I'm with Henshaw's in Iowa City. I just want to comment and say thank you to all of you who are at least considering, reconsidering the decision, whatever the outcome may be. I think that speaks a lot towards all of you. Also, I just want to make a point quickly about, you know, metrics, which I completely agree with. Metrics are a great thing. I believe it was brought up that, you know, one of the metrics could be businesses going out, out of business, unfortunately, you know, waiting enough time for, to see what metrics are can lead to businesses going out of business, and just wouldn't want to see that. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Woodburn. I don't know if this is the right time to speak. I'm just speaking in regards to the parking downtown Iowa City. Is this not the right time to bring up that issue?
I think it's right there, Amy.
Okay, that is wonderful. So, I've been a part of the downtown business for 31 years now, and the parking issue that is going on is, I think, creating a lot of chaos and a lot of difficulty for people that are working very hard to support their families and keep businesses going. And I was wondering if any of you have any ideas of a way that we could make parking more accessible, make the $3 an hour that it just went up to become more reasonable, to make it more accessible to elderly people that want to come dine in our restaurants? Like I said, I've been working downtown for 31 years. I bring a coin, a bag of coins every day to work with me, so that when people come in and they don't understand the parking system and they want to park on the street, I just say, "I gotcha." And so I bring my money in, and I go out, and I plug their meters. And then sometimes people get really confused, and they don't understand, and they don't have the coins, they don't understand the app. I don't understand the app. And even the credit card swipe, sorry, the system that is installed is subpar. I work downtown every day. The system is not really that great. So, I'm just thinking that it's really driving people out of downtown to come dine and shop. And I'm friends with a lot of owners downtown Iowa City, and I think there should be a way that we could make it more practical, affordable, for people to enjoy downtown Iowa City. For instance, you can park downtown Des Moines for $1 an hour. You can park in Cedar Rapids, some places for $0.50 an hour. You can park in Ames for $0.50 an hour if you park 10 hours, or $1 an hour. Why is Iowa City $3 an hour to park downtown if you just want to have lunch at these wonderful restaurants and wonderful shops? So I was wondering if anybody had any thought on why that's happening? And maybe you could reach out to some of these business owners downtown, like, all of us work downtown, you know? And why is this happening? So I don't know if this is time that you can give a response, or...
Actually, no, we don't engage...
Oh, I don't know. I've never done this before. I'm obviously kind of nervous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I think now I'm going to close the public comment. Do we do the hammer, or no?
Just go on to item eight?
Yeah, okay. Item eight is planning on zoning matter. Item 8A, rezoning 1215 Camp Cordenard Road. And orders conditionally rezoning approximately 5.01 acres of land located at 1215 Camp Cordenard Road from interim development single-family residential IDRS zone to low density single-family residential RS5 zone. And this is the second consideration, but the staff is requesting expedited action. May I have a motion to waive the second consideration?
So moved.
Moved by Alter.
Second.
Second by Mo.
I moved, right, I moved that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the first consideration and vote be waived... Second, should it be second?
No, you move it, second by...
I haven't finished...
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's how you move it, I think.
Yes, that the first consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be given second consideration and vote at this time.
Thank you, second. Okay, moved by Alter, second by Mo. Public discussion on this item? Okay, council discussion?
None.
Okay, roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
And Burgess.
Yes.
Motion basis, seven to zero. And now, can I have a motion to pass on adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Moved by Mo.
Second, Harmsen.
Second by Harmsen. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion basis, seven to zero. Item 8B, rezoning 225 North Dubuque Road. An order rezoning approximately seven acres of property located at 2255 North Dubuque Road from Office Research Park or RP Zone to Neighborhood Public P1 Zone. And this is all second consideration. May I have a motion to waive? The staff also request expedited action. I guess need a motion to waive the second consideration.
Oh, so moved.
No, you have to leave this.
Okay, sorry. I moved that the rule requiring the ordinances be, must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the first consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be given second consideration and vote at this time.
Second, Mo.
Okay, moved by Alter, second by Mo. Public discussion? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion basis, seventy zero. And now, I would like a motion to pass on adopt.
So moved, Mo.
Moved by Mo.
Second.
Second by Alter. Roll call, please.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Okay, motion basis, seven to zero. Now, we're going to the regular former agenda. Item 9A, water system and wastewater system king deposit and fee. Orders amended Title III entitled finance, taxation and fee. Chapter IV entitled schedule of fee, rate, charge, bond, fine and penalties. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have our staff run to lead this process.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Ryan Kenaki, Public Works Director. In the past, the Water Division has reviewed and approved administratively the fees charged for water meters, water taps, water meter connections and usage. And the Wastewater Division has reviewed and approved administratively the fees charged for testing services and sand load disposal. With the latest review of the fees, and to be more transparent, staff has determined these fees should be listed in the schedule of fees. These are fees that are already being charged, and this ordinance will add them to the list of fees in the city code. There is an increase in the water tap and water meter fees, but this is due to an increase in material and meter costs. And these fees were last updated in November of 2021. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions to run? Okay, public discussion. Anyone in the public would like to speak on this item? I don't see no one in line. Okay, I will close the public hearing. And now, may I have a motion to give first consideration?
So moved, Mo.
Second to Teague.
Moved by Mo, second by Teague. Council discussion. I see no one. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Motion basis, seven to zero. Item 9B, orders prohibited on street parking within 10 feet of a yield sign. An order amended Title IX entitled motor vehicles and traffic. Chapter IV entitled parking regulation. Section one entitled parking prohibit in a specific place by prohibiting parking within 10 feet of the yield sign. And this is the first consideration. May I have a motion to give a first consideration?
So moved, Harmsen. Second, Mo.
Moved by Harmsen, second by Mo. Staff, now, I think, can...
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council. Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. Currently, the city code prohibits on-street parking within 10 feet of a stop sign or a traffic signal. The reason for the prohibition is, of course, so that cars parking at these locations don't interfere with the motorist's visibility of said stop sign or traffic signal. And while the same principle should apply equally to yield signs, they do not currently have the same protection in the city code, so you can park within 10 feet of a yield sign currently. That said, vehicles parking beneath yield signs have recently become problematic in several locations around town, creating unsafe situations at several intersections. This ordinance will allow necessary traffic enforcement when vehicles are parking within 10 feet of a stop sign, and of course, then a yield sign if the ordinance passes. And in my mind, this ordinance really just closes a gap in the current code, thereby making our intersection safer for motorists, bicycles, and pedestrians.
For the areas where this is a problem, is there any kind of like signage or communication effort, or a first infraction-free kind of thing, so people get trained that this is a change? Because there's probably people who've done this for years illegally and wouldn't, maybe aren't listening to this meeting.
Right.
Might have better things to do tonight.
Right. We were not anticipating on any sort of public education, just because right now, currently, you cannot park within 10 feet of a stop sign. Now, you wouldn't be able to park within 10 feet of a yield sign. I don't know that it, I think it may be common knowledge that you can't in most cases, and in fact, I think the state code requires you to not park within 10 feet of a yield sign now. The Iowa City Code doesn't. So, we weren't planning on it, but I think we certainly could do some outreach and some education.
Say that again, that you said it is required by this...
I think the state code already, yes, disallows parking within 10 feet of a yield sign, but the city code does not.
This just enables...
Correct.
So in essence, this is just codifying what is, would be enforced anyway by state?
It wouldn't be enforced now, because it's not in the city code.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But I think it's mostly just sort of closing a gap, and that's why we weren't really anticipating a lot of public education, but Mr. Lee wouldn't hurt.
I think it's a good idea. I'm just, you know, people who've been doing it lawfully for a long time, consider that.
Yeah, I do think the community service officers and police will be lenient, yes, I would say, for some time, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public discussion. Anyone online? No one in line? Anyone in the public? Okay, council discussion.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, yeah. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Motion basis, seven to zero. Okay, 9C, taxi cab and beddy cab regulation. An order amended Title V entitled business and license regulation. Chapter II entitled tax, tax cabs and beddy cabs. Section II entitled business license to change the time period of the license term. Section V entitled vehicles requirements to remove the color scheme requirement for vehicles. And Section 10 entitled beddy cab to remove the color scheme requirement for the beddy cab. This is a second consideration, but the staff is requesting expedited action. May I have a motion to waive the second consideration?
I moved that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the first consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be given second consideration and vote at this time.
Second, Mo.
Moved by Alter, second by Mo. Public discussion. I see no one. Council discussion.
I'm just glad that this is being cleared up, so that it can make this easier for the taxis.
Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion basis, seventy to zero. Now, motion to pass on adopt.
So moved, Mo.
Moved by Mo, second by Alter. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes. Thank you, Alter. Burgess. Okay, motion basis, seven to zero. Item number 9D, physically at 25, you did read public hearing. An order amended Title III entitled city finance, taxation and fee. Chapter IV entitled schedule of fee, rate, change, bond, fine and penalties of the city code to increase and change charges and fees. And this is, I need a motion to pass on adopt.
So moved, Mo.
Second, Alter.
Moved by Mo, second by Alter. Public discussion? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion basis, seven to zero. Item 9E, parking and traffic engineering camera. An order amended Title IX entitled motor vehicles and traffic. Chapter 11 entitled traffic camera, doors and license plate recognition system. Section two entitled definition of to allow transportation services to use automatic license plate recognition system or device for parking purposes, and to clarify the definition of automatic traffic civilian system or device. And this is, I need a motion to pass on adopt.
We, I have an amendment for this one.
I think, yeah, if you have an amendment.
Let's get the ordinance on the table.
Yeah, we need just a motion to put it on the table, right?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Alter.
Moved by Mo, second by Alter. Now, I think we can do the amendment now?
But can propose it?
Yes, unless you...
Or discuss.
Have discussion.
Discussion just in general.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I can just go over what I will procedurally propose after I discuss it. I think you all should see a late handout that includes, well, for Counselor Burgess and Mayor Teague, it'll be in your email. I sent the suggestions that I had relevant to our discussion at our prior council meeting for amendment. That is based on our discussion, I believe reaches the goals that majority of council agreed upon. Apologies for the late, I've been having some, some family issues that I've been dealing with, that's why I'm not there today. But I am hopeful that council will consider the requests. And so the, just for the sake of the public, and folks that are there in person, I am happy to read those amendments. So specifically, with relation to the automatic license plate reader, or license plate recognition systems, the text that would be amended is the same as is proposed by the city attorney, except for the following. Automatic license plate recognition systems or devices installed in city parking ramps or on city parking department vehicles primarily used for parking enforcement are not included in this definition. As I detailed in that email, I'm also open, depending on the city attorney's office sensibilities, you know, primarily through or not necessarily exclusively. I know that was a discussion from our, from our last meeting, but I thought that the use of primarily would, would address that, as primarily would not generally be used for something that is exclusive. The other section relating to automatic traffic surveillance systems or devices, you'll see that there were two emails sent about that. There was a typo in the first one, but again, the language is consistent with the city attorney's office, except for the following. Specific streets and traffic engineering division cameras installed at intersections with traffic signals or roundabouts, used primarily, though not exclusively, for traffic engineering and study, shall not be included in this definition, only by authorization, by resolution passed by the Iowa City City Council. I would, if there's any discussion on that, well, I guess we would probably have to, a motion to amend, so I would, I would motion to amend the proposal based on the following, on that language.
I have basic questions about where exactly, I mean, you do signal about like, okay, at the automatic traffic surveillance system or device, but I'm, I'm really not sure where you want to see that inserted?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, so the, the language is at the end of each of those sections. So if you look at the red, the Red Line document that was included, at the end of each of those paragraphs where they include language, where it has like the carve-out that says this is not that, these are just slightly changed versions of that language that was in the Red Line document, more in line with, with what I was thinking about, and specifically, not carving out broad swathes for entire camera systems. So this is towards the bottom of that, where it, where it has detailed a paragraph where, you know, we're giving an exception.
So, so this is not in reference to the ordinance that's in our packet, as it's written right now? This is...
No, so this is, this is an amendment to the ordinance in the packet.
That I do understand. I'm trying to find where in the ordinance you would have these things inserted, and you're saying at the...
So it's at the, it's, it's within, here, let me, let me pull it up here, one second. I can be more specific.
that memo? You're-
No, so the, the section where it says neither transportation services department license plate recognition systems or devices, nor streets and traffic engineering division cameras are included in this definition, under the automatic traffic surveillance systems or device, that on page two of the proposed ordinance that's in the packet, that would be replaced with the second paragraph that I read and that is detailed in your late handout, whereas the same line, which is under the automatic license plate recognition system, neither transportation services department license plate recognition systems or devices, nor streets and traffic engineering division camera systems are included in this definition, that would be replaced with the first item that I read. Sorry to go backwards, that might be confusing, but that line of text is what I am proposing be amended to what is detailed in your late handout.
And how's that work? So if there is a motion on the floor already?
Well, he's moving to amend. And so there'll need to be a second, if there's a second to Counselor Dunn's motion.
So before we discuss his amendments, there needs to be a second to his amendments.
Okay, I second.
And also Mayor Protem, I know the city attorney is on Zoom 2, and he will-
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Do we let the city attorney first talk to us about the amendment he made? And that's what I, how I was trying to do it that way.
Sure, now that we have a second, sure.
Yeah, can we give a chance to the city attorney to talk about this, please?
Sure. Can you folks hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Well, per your discussion on your August 6 meeting, I prepared on August 7 what I perceived to be the council's will for, I should say Counselor Dunn's will for a motion to amend and then sent that around. Based on the communication we received today, it sounds like Counselor Dunn would like to alter that language that I prepared somewhat, and has now moved that the ordinance amendment be amended in the way that he described. I'm afraid we don't have a fully clean version, to my knowledge, of what he's proposing, but I believe if you look at the email that he sent to council, I believe at 3:28 PM today, as modified in an email sent at 3:33 PM today, you can see the language that he's advancing to alter or amend the original ordinance amendment that has passed for two readings. The two things I would comment on thus far is, are as follows. One, in the description of the automatic license plate recognition systems, Counselor Dunn used language primarily used for parking enforcement, and then indicated that primarily, though not necessarily exclusively, would be fine with him too. I think the first version, primarily used for parking enforcement, is fine. I think that primarily makes it clear that it's, you know, at least 51% of its use is for traffic enforcement. So I think the, though not necessarily exclusively, is implied. But if we use that language, we would want to mirror that language with the specific streets and traffic engineering division cameras below. At present, as I understand it, he offers language that includes the phrase "used primarily, though not exclusively, for traffic engineering and study." I would suggest that we just use, or use the language "used primarily for traffic engineering and says traffic engineering and study."
I'm happy to-
Yeah, okay, great. The second thing I would note is that I believe that all of the changes, including the ones that came via email this afternoon, would be non-substantive, and thus council could move forward with the third reading with one exception, and that's the last sentence under the traffic camera definition. And that's the reference to only by authorization by a resolution passed by the Iowa City City Council. I believe that would be a substantive change if this council were to adopt that. I think you would need to move forward with the first reading today and then have two subsequent readings in order to finally adopt and pass that change.
Can you kind of detail as to why it's a substantive change?
Sure. The first reason is that it adds an additional step for council approval. The original amendment that put forth, or that was put forth, just described all traffic engineering cameras. And at this point, if you were to adopt, if council were to adopt this, as Counselor Dunn has offered this amendment, there would be no cameras exempted at this moment because there has been no resolution approved by council detailing the intersections and roundabouts upon which traffic cameras could be used. I'm not suggesting that I've got any reason to believe that council wouldn't at some later date adopt every intersection, but I don't know that. And because of that additional requirement and the lack of certainty that all traffic engineering cameras would in fact be listed in such a resolution, I think that would have to be considered a substantive change.
Okay, I think that makes sense. I'd be, I'd be willing to strike that last line, not the last line, you know, but that substantive change from the proposed amendment. So it would read something to the effect of, you know, the intersections are excluded, but, you know, keeping the non-systemwide language and the primarily used language.
Why don't we, why don't I read through it as I understand you are now proposing it, just so we're all on the same page. I think it would read, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because this is ultimately your motion, "Specific streets and traffic engineering division cameras installed at intersections with traffic signals or roundabouts used primarily for traffic engineering and study shall not be included in this definition." Period.
Correct.
Eric, this is Megan. Does this change any of the intent? I mean, this still, I'm circling all the way back to sort of the-
The ordinance amendment put forth.
Yes, to the 30,000-foot. The intention of this is to allow the police, when there has been a crime committed, to be able to access footage from traffic cameras, or I'm sorry, from parking and traffic cameras, to help aid that, their investigations.
Yes, to lend clarity to what has otherwise been a bit ambiguous-
In terms of language.
-language at present. Yes, this would make it clear that that would be permissible.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know. Can you just tell us what direction we should go on this?
Procedurally, I think.
Like, do we proceed with a motion to?
Well, I think maybe a friendly amendment. Well, I'll let the city attorney chime in then.
Well, yes, I would first want to hear that Counselor Dunn is okay with the friendly amendment. I think I understood him to confirm that that was all right. I would want to also get confirmation from the second. I can't recall. I think maybe Mayor Protem made the second that that's okay with her.
Yes.
I see you're nodding your head. And then finally, I would think that we would want to invite public comment at this point.
Okay, now, public discussion. Okay, no public discussion. Council discussion.
Just want to make sure before I vote on this, I am crystal clear because, obviously trying to digest this on, you know, just in the last, since 3:30 this afternoon, and then incorporate that new thing. So I'm looking at the ordinance that's proposed in our packet, just to make sure everybody knows what I'm looking at. I'm looking at Section 1 Amendment, the paragraph that starts off with the all in bold "automatic license plate recognition system." At the bottom of that paragraph, the proposed changes that came to us from city staff are underlined, and they read "neither transportation services department license plate recognition systems or devices, nor streets and traffic engineering division camera systems are included in this definition." If I, just making sure I'm understanding, Counselor Dunn is saying, remove that part, correct? And then replace that with "specific streets and traffic engineering division cameras, camera systems installed at intersections with traffic signals or roundabouts used primarily, though not exclusively, for traffic engineering and study shall not be included in this definition." Period. Am I understanding that we're swapping out those two things? And then same thing, swapping out similarly in the following paragraph that begins "automatic traffic surveillance system or device"? Is that, have I got that right?
Correct.
Yes, there were a few changes within, excuse me, that Eric had suggested of after "used primarily," strike "though not exclusively" in answers.
Right, if I may, counsel, I think it's probably best thought of in a couple of steps. One was the version that has passed two readings. That's with the underlying language that begins with "neither transportation services department license plate, et cetera, et cetera." But then I proposed, following last council discussion, on behalf of Counselor Dunn, some language that changed it instead from saying "neither transportation services department" to just start with "automatic license plate recognition systems or devices, et cetera." And that has further been amended as part of his motion to amend this evening by Counselor Dunn in the way that I read earlier, such that the license plate, automatic license plate recognition system language that we were changing would now read "automatic license plate recognition systems or devices installed in city parking ramps or on city parking department vehicles primarily used for parking enforcement are not included in this definition." Period. That would be the only change to the definition of automatic license plate recognition systems. The second part of the ordinance amendment, as originally proposed, included language that we were adding that read "neither transportation systems department license, et cetera, et cetera," would now read instead, "specific streets and traffic engineering division cameras, cameras installed at intersections with traffic signals or roundabouts used primarily for traffic engineering and study shall not be included in this definition." Period. And those are both new additions, that is, language that would just be added on to the end of that definition of automatic traffic surveillance system or device.
Thank you for that clarification. I have another question, but I've been monopolizing time. Did somebody else want to jump in? I'm, this is more of a procedural question. We have an option to pass the ordinance as it has already been passed in two meetings. We have an option to pass an ordinance with an amendment as presented by our city staff, or we have an option to pass this with amendments by Counselor Dunn. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we are only talking about the amendments presented by Counselor Dunn right now, just to be real crystal clear on where we're at. There's three-
To be, well, to be clear, right now, there are only two options. There is the original version that you passed for two readings, or the, I'll say, final version from Counselor Dunn. The version that I proposed-
Has not received the motion yet.
-was intended to be from Counselor Dunn, but Counselor Dunn amended it before he made his motion to amend. So that version is not on the table unless someone else wishes to move and second it after the decision on this motion to amend.
Thank you. So then, my last question then, and this comes to mind in our discussion, just want to be crystal clear. I know, and this was brought to my mind just here a few days ago, we had a member of our community, an older member of our community, and a search was initiated out of concern for their health and safety. And I'm guessing that in a situation, that would be one of the situations, although I know city staff hasn't had time to prep for this question, but that would be something that law enforcement and other public safety would use cameras if they had an idea of where this person might have been to try and, try and find them. I want to make sure, I bring that up because that made it in the forefront of my mind again, want to make sure that for public safety reasons and criminal investigations, that underneath the policies that our city manager's office already has in place, that we will retain that ability, because I just think those are critical public safety considerations. So, city attorney, is that, will Counselor Dunn's amendment leave those public safety functions in place?
Those functions would be in place either under the version that has passed two readings or under Counselor Dunn's version.
I think the city manager was going to speak, and I may have interrupted. I'm sorry.
No, I agree with the city attorney.
And I'm struggling to understand the difference between the amendment crafted by our attorney versus the one crafted by Counselor Dunn. What's, what's the difference? What's the effect that you're trying to make?
Yeah. So the, if you recall from our conversation, the really big thing that I wanted to avoid was excluding entire camera systems. This excludes cameras used for a specific purpose in a specific way, primarily, but it does not exclude every single camera that is operated by, you know, the traffic services department. I believe that functionally, it has the same effect as is desired by staff. I think that that is demonstrated by the responses from the city attorney and the city manager, but it does not exclude an entire system. And that, that is what, you know, the four counselors, you know, at our last meeting indicated that people were comfortable with doing, so long as the law enforcement functions, as Counselor Harmson, you know, so aptly indicated, were preserved, which is the intent of the, of the amendment.
Right, satisfying.
We have a motion now on the floor. If you, there is no more discussion.
On the amendment?
We have a first and second.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
On the amendment, but that provided by Counselor Dunn, yeah.
Sully?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, and what else we do then now? We have another motion, right, on the floor also? The first one that to adopt?
But it's moot, so.
Okay, now.
Well, well, hold on. So we passed the motion to amend the ordinance, but I think you still need to have the third and final reading. I think that that motion is already on the table.
Yeah, that's what I said. Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm following. Yeah. We have a motion, we have a second. Public discussion? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Sully?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three. Yes, four to three. Zen. Yeah, I guess, can I have a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Mo.
Second. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, move by Mo, second by Alter. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Again, same sign. Okay, motion passes seven to seven, yeah, seven to zero. All right, that was weird. Okay, item nine F. Adopting tax increment financial policy. Resolution adopting City of Iowa City Tax Increment Finance TIF policy. And, yes, this is, I would like to have a motion.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Alter.
Second, Mo.
Second by Mo. And now we have Rachel to address us, if you have any comment. I think we spoke about this many times, and you presented last time, all the changes that had been made, and I encourage the council to vote on this if you don't have any other discussion. So I will open it for the public, public discussion. Then now council discussion.
Did we do a motion second?
Yeah.
Counselor, all were moved, and I seconded.
Yes, we did.
And we did public comment. And I just say that the policy that you guys have before you just really modifies the sustainability section. I think we've maintained very clear signals, our strong commitment to climate action, but added flexibility-
added flexibility for staff to have some judgment calls. I think we have gotten a good place there, and then we added a small portion to be very, very clear about this is the policy, not actually the agreement language that would be ironed out during that agreement, and every single TIF agreement would come before council for approval.
Two things that I was struck by, one was that I really liked that clarifying language, and I cannot remember whether it was specific in that, or if it was in the climate sustainability, I believe it was in the climate action piece, but about having to demonstrate over time, I mean, that the climate action needs to be sustainable, and then needs, that that's an expectation. So I appreciated that language as well in the climate action, because part of it.
The climate action section too, I think, got more robust to acknowledge the growing number of TIF projects that we are doing that are small things, that are really meaningful, you know, putting in LED lights, maybe having a high-efficiency air compressor, there's all kinds of really positive things we're doing in the vein of climate action that aren't exactly 21 South Lynn Street, you know, like, there's a lot of cool stuff we're doing that's not just this pretty special once every five or 10 years kinds of projects. So I think we're in a much better place today than we were before.
Thank you for all the work the economic committee and staff put into this and the revisions.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Celi?
Yes, motion passes, seven to zero. And we're in our last item, item number 10, announce of vacant previous. Announce of vacant previous, public art advisory committee, one vacant to fill an unexpired term, upon appointed December 1st, 2026. Appointment must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 10, 2024. Airport zoning board of adjustment, one vacant to fill a five-year term, January 1st, 2024, December 31st, 2028. Airport zoning commission, one vacant to fill six-year term, from January 1st, 2024, to December 31st, 2029. Board of Abilis, one vacant to fill unexpired term, upon appointment, December 31st, 2028. Hostelry preservation commission, and this is Jefferson Street, one vacant to fill a three-year term, from January 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2025, for an unexpired term. So, Hostelry Preservation Commission, Woodland Avenue, one vacant to fill an unexpired term, plus a three-year terms, upon appointed, from January 30th, 2027. And I guess, vacancies will be remain open until filled. Now, item number 11, city council informations.
Just wanted to send a great big welcome back to all of the University of Iowa students who start class on Monday, and a big, you know, happy new school year to all of the students and teachers in the Iowa City School District, and other schools in town that start on Friday, and, and, you know, good luck to all of the parents with all of the running and moving and last-minute school shopping and everything else. Exciting time of year.
I'd just like to say that last week, I had a chance to go to Pennsylvania and look at a train. We are currently studying an option to do a thing called Pop-Up Metro, which is very interesting, it would be a use of the Crandic Line. There's also an ongoing study being conducted by the MPO, that's mostly done or done, for bus rapid transit using that same train line as a dedicated bus line, and there's also a previous train study. So I think in the very near future, we'll have three really interesting regional transportation things to consider, and it's my goal to write up some notes for council on that trip to Pennsylvania. Very, very cool-looking train, and it's quiet, and I got to drive it.
Counselor Mo and I also attended the Iowa City Farmers Market for a listening post last Saturday. That was great. It was great to hear from folks about a variety of issues, including plenty of road issues. So we've, Counselor Mo has been in contact, and I've been CC'd on those emails, so I don't want to say, you know, credit where credit is not due, but we're following up with those as a, as a city entity, and trying to figure out some things there. But as always, it's a, it's a great time. KCRG actually came down and, you know, sniped, sniped me for an interview about the tobacco ordinance, so more, more information is, is going out about that.
Well, I want to say thanks to Mayor Protem for presiding over the meeting today. Thank you so much, and for all you've done over the past while I've been busy attending to a few other things and representing the city at different places. I wanted to mention that this weekend, on Saturday, 12:30 to 8:30 is the Latino Fest, so I encourage everybody to come down to the Pet Mall in the South District. We have from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, back to school. This is a, kind of a partnership with the Black Voices Project, and I know our police department, to kind of give some back-to-school bags to students that need it. And then, as we did here, the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County is celebrating their 20th year, and that is going to be Wednesday, the 28th, 5:00 PM to 6:30. And they do such great work, and really appreciate all that they do. And then, of course, next weekend will be the first home football game, so definitely plan your routes.
It seems like everybody's sort of reactivating, because I actually have some notes from the Better Together 2030 Board. They have been very assiduous in looking at five different pillars that are important through the city, or through the county and the region. Number one is actually, there is an initiative, they have gotten behind passing the Conservation Bond that will be coming up in November through the county, and they have raised almost all the money. They want to begin their advocacy and education campaign for this, but one of the things that they wanted to remind is that the 20, first $20 million of the last bond that they did, supported 15 different projects throughout the area, including a number of, all of the trails that are around here, particularly connecting out into Coralville. So, anyway, that was one pillar that they are working on. Another pillars, two, three, and four, they're really looking at strategic investment districts, identifying places throughout the county where they can really lend their strength and their advocacy and their expertise to emerging commercial markets, and to emerging commercial markets and merging it with affordable housing. They're going to have them identified by September, and they are across Johnson County, but they also believe in working, not having to work from scratch, and so their model is invest Des Moines. And so it seems like there can be some really exciting and interesting possibilities. They've also been doing some really great business supports in the IT, legal, and HR kind of arenas to help with walk-ins from entrepreneurs and small businesses, and additionally, they're connecting these entrepreneurs and business, small business owners to grant opportunities that they are putting out. There's $425,000 in grants available to underestimated business community, so that's, as I find out more, I will let you all know. They're continuing their work on broadband infrastructure and childcare. There is kind of a discussion and conversation combined at the public library, September 17th, from 5:00 to 6:30. Lori Nash is going to provide an overview, and then there will be a panel discussing sort of the needs that they see in the city, or in, sorry, in the, in the region. And, my gosh, there's, I have tons of notes, but I think I've hit the high points, and if I have missed them, my apologies, Katie.
Any other counselor? Okay, city manager report?
Not tonight, thank you.
And city attorney office report?
No.
City clerk?
I do not have anything.
Okay, that was easy. And now it's time to adjourn.
No, just knocking on wood.
Oh, I thought maybe you have something to say before we, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved, Mo.
Move by Mo.
Second, Teague.
Second by Teague, and all in favor say aye.
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 Same sign.